Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 19th meeting of the Portland City Council. Would you please call the roll?
Fish.
Here.
Saltzman.
Here.
Novick. Fritz.
Here.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone. We're going to move to our four-fifths agenda item number 527-1 and 527-2.
527-1, adopt new and amended supporting documents for an update of Portland's comprehensive plan, except report of the Citizen Involvement Committee, and 527-2, adopt a new comprehensive plan for the city of Portland, Oregon.
Okay, so we have a couple of items to deal with here. In particular, and I have some points I need to get into the record about one of them, last Thursday, council reaffirmed a decision made the previous day for comp plan map amendment number five, sorry, S12, which addresses property at Southeast 17th and Inslee. Prior to our original vote on May 11th, council asked for the Planning Sustainability Commission's recommendation in order to inform our decision-making process. BPS staff incorrectly replied that R1 was the designation that would have applied when, in fact, the recommendation was a combination of R1 and R2.5. The next day, BPS staff provided a correction, and council reaffirmed the earlier vote to deny the requested amendment to apply RH to the property. After speaking with council offices following the vote on May 11th, I learned that some of us voted based on an understanding that a vote consistent with the PSC would not render any properties non-conforming. This is not the case. Applying R2.5 in a two-block area subject to this amendment would result in four properties becoming non-conforming based on what is built there today, or in one case, what is currently under permit to be built. To acknowledge and address this misunderstanding, staff would like to bring this item back before the city council to provide clarification and call for another vote. So you want to deal with that first?
I was going to do that second.
Do that second and then deal with Metro first? Okay, and so Andy Shaw is here from Metro.
Great. Thank you for having me, Andy Shaw with Metro. We're happy they're taking this up today. Thanks for taking the time both last week and this week, I know you're very busy. The voters in our region have twice passed bond measures to direct Metro to acquire critical habitat, to protect water quality, and to create meaningful access to nature for citizens. For the past two decades, we've kept our eyes squarely on those goals. The Metro council and our citizen oversight are responsible for managing that program and making sure that we're achieving those goals. We acquire land through a willing seller program, and that can make it quite challenging often to obtain the target areas that we're trying to obtain. Frequently, when we buy land, we've got to buy a larger parcel than we need. The Spring Water Corridor is a good example of that. We purchased parcels along there to obtain key right-of-way on the Spring Water Trail and had to buy larger parcels along the way in order to obtain that right-of-way. We don't intend to keep those larger parcels. They're zoned, in many cases, residential. We intend to sell those and to use the proceeds from those properties to put back in the program to ensure we're achieving the voters' goals, which is obtaining as much water quality land, habitat land, and other critical trails, and improving the parks that we've purchased so people can access them. In some other cases, we've, down by Selwood, we've purchased land where we have upland habitat and we've got floodplain habitat. Both are important, but the upland habitat may not be as critical as our ability to purchase additional waterfront land. And if we can trade that land with others, or we can sell that land in order to purchase their land, that will further, we think, the goals of our program. Downzoning our properties lowers the value of those properties and limits our ability to make those kinds of trades or sales in the interest of obtaining as much land as possible for water protection, water quality protection, and habitat protection. So we're asking you, help me again here, Joe, we're asking on, to adopt 55?
The, Metro is asking that the items in number 55, that we discussed those properties last time, that the city council does not change the designation to open spaces recommended in the mayor's letter. And then Metro is asking for reconsideration of amendment M54, which you all voted on in the first work session, and that's the amendment that designated the parcels along the Spring Water Corridor to open space. So those are the two actions that are relevant here. You are continuing the discussion of item 55, so there's no change there. It's just how you vote on it.
And just-
If we're sympathetic to Metro's position, we would vote no on 55?
If you would vote no on the motion, which is to adopt the change of zoning in the mayor's letter, yes.
Right, which was 55.
Yes.
Right. No on 55.
Yes, no on 55 and reconsider 54.
And to be clear, the properties that are subject to this discussion are listed on a sheet that we passed out that was transcribed from the Metro letter.
Yeah, you have another copy of that. For some reason, I'll look at the ends again.
Well, I am, I don't know if they're worth the deliberation point, but I am persuaded by Metro's arguments. They are an elected board. They are responsible to voters for managing open spaces and their parks and recreation areas. And it makes sense that when you have to buy a piece of property when you only need a trail right-of-way, there should be another way to flexibility for Metro to maximize the value of that remaining property, especially if the proceeds are going back into open space and natural area preservation. So I would, do I need to make a motion?
We will, yes, we'll take that, we'll take a motion unless there's any other questions for Andy. I guess, well, I have another question for Andy. Andy, one of the reasons why I'm reticent about this is just, in the abstract, I agree with what Commissioner Saltzman just said, at least in some situations, but when you're talking about a piece of riverfront land next to Selwood Riverfront Park, and when you're talking about Mitchell Creek Natural Area, you know, Van O Creek Natural Area, when a public agency, a parks agency, and that's how Metro is certainly perceived in this situation, buys a piece of property with voter-approved parks and open space funding, it's pretty dissonant, to say the least, to zone that for development, because we're supposed to zone the land based on its intended use. And I think any reason, most reasonable people who maybe aren't following all these machinations would probably expect to rest easy that having voted for the Metro green spaces measure and having seen Metro buy this critical piece of vulnerable property, that they don't have to worry about it getting developed.
That's a great question. I had to explain this to my wife, actually, and it took a little while.
Try to work with her and then try it on us.
Yes.
Did you persuade her?
Yes, in the end, yes. So if you look at Mitchell Creek area, we own a very large portion of property there. Some of it's roadfront property. That roadfront property does not necessarily have great habitat value. There's further creek land to both east and west that we would love to obtain in the program, and if it took a trade of some sort to do that, or if we could sell off a property and purchase that property, that will further our goals of protecting that watershed area, and it won't hurt, harm the goals the voters asked us to go achieve, because that roadfront area could serve a different purpose that does not actually protect the creek. Down on the waterfront, near Selwood-
Move off that one, though. I'd like to point out that I appreciate you raising the issue of the parks property that's in the middle there.
Yes.
In review from my staff, this was a mistake, and parks would like that.
With 527, 527-1 and 2, they're both, of course, continued forward. And now we'll take up item 528.
Were we taking 529 first, Commissioner?
Oh, sorry, yeah, is that right? That you want to do the solid-
529.
Or, do you want to do 530 first? Is that right?
We have, we have everyone teed up.
All right.
Susan, you want to do 530 quickly?
I'm going to do it at seven-five.
You can keep it to five? Do we have a lot of people testifying on it?
No.
One?
Okay, Mayor, as a courtesy to Susan-
All right.
I don't object to bumping, but we have, we have a lot of people teed up.
All right, item 530.
530, revise solid waste and recycling rates and fees for franchise residential collection and commercial permit tonnage fees effective July 1, 2016.
Okay, so this is the first of our utility rate ordinances. We are pleased to have our director here. I'll cut through the rest of my talking points and turn it right over to Susan Anderson.
Thank you, Susan Anderson, Director of Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. With me is Bruce Walker, our solid waste manager. So we're here today to talk rates, and we have some great news. For the fourth year in a row, solid waste and recycling rates are going down, as you can see soon. There it is, in this slide. We are proposing to reduce rates across the board. For example, in the 35-gallon roll cart, our most popular service level, rates will be reduced by 20 cents from $29.35 to $29.15, and that doesn't sound like a lot, but if you look at your electric, gas, and other utility bills, there aren't any others that are going down. So we're very happy about this. Every year, we do a thorough review of all the costs for providing service, and this year, the rate reduction was actually kind of amazing, because at the same time that rates are going down, we required haulers to make improvements to their truck fleet, shifting to cleaner diesel or compressed natural gas trucks. However, this increase in cost was more than covered by three factors. We have excellent recycling and composting by all of our residents, and that means lower tip fees for all the composting versus garbage, improved efficiencies by local haulers, and lower prices for fuel. If you take a step back in history, you can see that rates have continued to be lower than inflation ever since, really, ever since the residential franchise system began. You can see the slide there, back in 1993. Even with providing free roll carts to every household, you used to have to buy your own garbage can, and now we provide those and converting to much cleaner vehicles. So our partnership with the city's haulers has been a great success. There is one area that I would like us to look into, to see if there are opportunities to diversify the ownership of all of our residential franchisees. I don't want to do this tomorrow. I just want us to begin to think about this as we look at all of our programs through an equity lens. I think we need to recognize that we have very few and maybe one women-owned firms or minority-owned firms, and so as we, we have our franchises for 10 years, but as we begin to look towards the next time, I want us to look at that and see about opportunities. Next slide. On the commercial side, you remember that we don't set rates for commercial service. Commercial service does include multifamily properties. We do establish rules for safety and for effective collection. We also collect a tonnage fee that funds the oversight of all the commercial haulers and also funds commercial waste reduction recycling programs, and this includes, again, service to multifamily properties. It also pays for collection from public trash cans, like those that are along the transit mall. Currently, only a few business districts in the city gets to get this collection service. We'd like to broaden that. It's something we've talked about for probably a decade. What we would like to do is add that service to regional centers, town centers, and neighborhood centers, do this over five years, spread out the costs, and do that by adding $1.30 to the tonnage fee, so increasing that from $8.30 to $9.60. That's about a half a percent increase for most commercial customers. We don't know the exact cost, because it's a free market, and that amount is determined between those who are getting the service and their private hauler. So it's something we've been looking at for a long time. I think it's a, we haven't had an increase in the tonnage fee for three or four years? Three years?
2012.
Yeah, four years. And this would roll it in over five years and begin to provide that service in the business districts. And as we become more walkable, wonderful, complete neighborhoods, it's more and more important that we keep those districts looking great.
Does it start this year with expanding service to more districts? We have seven right now that we do.
Right, and so there are another 20, I believe.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, and so what we'll do is roll in another four, five a year, and we'll come up with a process for how to do that, and obviously, looking at all parts of the city.
We received a lot of requests from the Pearl-
Yes.
-to add theirs. Is that, you're aware of that, I'm assuming?
Yes.
And that they would be considered in the next wave?
Yes.
Is that correct? That's terrific. I'm very excited about that.
Yes, great. Thank you.
Would you be adding some more of the Big Belly solar compactors?
Those are not city-owned, and maybe Bruce can talk to, keeping it within our five minutes here, is, those are, those are provided by private investments.
Portland Business Alliance has ponied up for those, and our contracts do the collection.
Who currently takes care of garbage at, say, TriMet stops and in businesses like on Hawthorne?
Well, on TriMet stops, TriMet is responsible. Hawthorne is not an example of where we provide service, but it would be an example of some of those business districts, town centers, that we would be looking at in the future.
And they, so currently, it's the neighboring businesses that pay for garbage pickup there?
In that example and several other in the city, yes.
And you'll have a process for business districts to apply?
Yes, we will.
Figured. Yeah, there's a lot of interest, and I think there's a lot of confusion amongst the community as to who's responsible for what, so having us responsible for more, I think, is definitely the way to go.
Thank you both. Other questions? Thank you very much. Anyone, I know there's at least one person that wants to speak on this item, so come on up.
Thank you very much for all of your work. Excellent.
Thanks, both. Your last minute. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Commissioners. My name is Dave White. I am regional representative for the Oregon Refuge and Recycling Association, and in that position, I assist and represent the Portland Haulers Association and its members that provide solid waste and recycling collection service in the city. PHA members have worked cooperatively with the city staff to provide financial information that was analyzed by staff and your rate consultant, and the haulers appreciate the opportunity to engage in discussions with staff during the rate review process and the city's willingness to consider that input. PHA believes that the rate review process is fair and has resulted in a rate proposal, that's before you, that is reasonable for the ratepayers and the haulers. This is the fourth year in a row that rates have remained flat or gone down. That's remarkable, as staff, as Susan just said, considering inflationary impacts, negative recycling markets, that the haulers are continuing to buy expensive but energy-efficient and clean-operating trucks to meet the clean fleet requirements. PHA is pleased that BPS acknowledged this year that the proposed rate reduction is, again, a testament to the haulers becoming more efficient, that efficiency results in lower labor costs and downward pressure on rates. So just a heads up for next year, we are proposing, a big reason for the efficiencies that we are achieving is because we've moved to automated trucks and roll carts that we use. And about 80%, I think it is, of Portland's garbage is not collected in a roll cart, but yard debris and recycling is, and so we have raised the issue with their staff to consider by next year, July of 2017, the next rate review, to move towards a fully-carded system for efficiency and for worker safety. So with that, like I said, I think you can tell that we support this proposal. We thank you for the opportunity to serve the community, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you for the, for coming in to say that we're doing a good job, that staff is doing a good job-
Doing a great job.
...and to celebrate what you're doing. I was just checking Twitter, and I'm shocked and saddened to find out that it's not yet been reported that we are decreasing the rates. I'm sure that'll come through any minute, that everybody-
Good news is always trumpet, right?
...be right on that. So thank you for your partnership on that. When you come back to ask for the universal roll carts next year, it would be really great to get information on the worker compensation claims from your staff and to be, I'm guessing that there's a huge decrease in injuries to your staff from not having to do so much heavy lifting, and I changed to a roll cart for my garbage because of that issue and because I was informed by staff of the benefits of automation. So I, and then I wanted to ask both you and staff as to whether we could do a renewed education campaign to help people remember what goes in garbage, what goes in recycling, what goes in compost, because I think as time has gone by, and some of the rules have changed back and forth, as I see as I'm walking to the bus stop, recycling cans that seem to be full of garbage to me. So I want to make sure that our sorters at the facilities and that your staff are getting the work that, the assistance from the government that we could do, so.
Oh, we work well in partnership to get that information out, and we need to continue to send that message, so we will do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just say, this is going to go to second reading next week, so we won't actually vote on it today, but while you're here, I just want to say that, you know, again, I often inform my colleagues about what I hear from other mayors when I go to the US Conference of Mayor's Meetings, and in other cities, garbage rates and garbage and recycling service are, you know, issues that are full of strikes and strife. And here, it's a quiet hearing with, you know, partners. So thank you for being good partners, because the haulers have helped make us the success that we are in recycling, kept these rates down, and now we have this ability to, with a modest increase in tipping fees, provide neighborhood district garbage service all over the city. And the fact that there is no strife about it is really one more thing about Portland that we take for granted, but maybe shouldn't, so we appreciate you.
Well, thank you for that opportunity.
Thanks very much. All right, this comes back next week for a final vote.
Mayor, please come back in two weeks.
Two weeks for a final vote. Thank you, with the rest of the budget. Okay, thank you. Now, we'll move to 528 and 529 together?
Together, please.
Okay. Could you read those two, please, Carl?
528, revise sewer and storm water rates, charges, and fees in accordance with the fiscal year 2016, 2017 sewer user rate study, and 529, authorize the rates and charges for water and water-related services during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017, and fix an effective date.
Okay, Commissioner Fish.
Thank you, Mayor. Colleagues, today I have the honor of presenting to you the proposed rate increases for the Portland Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services. For the third consecutive year, I have directed our two utilities to keep the combined rate increase at under 5%, and the bureaus have once again delivered. They have proposed a rate increase of just under 4.5% or roughly $4 per month for the typical customer. This reflects our ongoing commitment to providing good value to our ratepayers and to investing in basic services like replacing old pipes and preparing for the big one. A little more background on our budget. The typical monthly bill is about $100. About a third is for water and 2/3 is for sewer stormwater. As you'll see from the presentations, we believe we provide pretty good value to our customers. For example, we deliver two gallons of clean, safe, and reliable water to almost 1 million people in the region for about a penny. How do we stack up locally and nationally? Well, if you live in Lake Oswego or Tigard, you'll pay more for your water. In a recent survey released by J.D. Power, customers across the West Coast reported an average monthly cost of water of about $79. That's more than double what the Water Bureau will be proposing here today. On the sewer stormwater side, the typical customer under this proposal will pay just under $70 a month, and a part of that, as you know, is paying off the debt on the big pipe. And no one likes to pay more for a basic service, including me, but I'm pleased that we have been able to stabilize rates for three straight years, and I'm proud that our public utilities continue to invest in maintaining our system while exercising discipline with ratepayer dollars. This year, for example, with the mayor's leadership, the general fund picked up the cost of preservation work at Mount Tabor and the water fountain operations. There are a number of people I'd like to thank today. First, the Citizens Utility Board of Oregon for their ongoing partnership with Portland's utilities, and we'll be hearing from Janice Thompson later. The New Portland Utility Board for their thoughtful consideration of both bureaus' budgets, and we'll be hearing from the co-chairs. And our budget analysts, Ryan Kinsella, Claudio Campozano, and Melissa Merrill. Next, the two mics, Mike Stewart and Mike Jordan, and their dedicated teams at the Water Bureau and the Bureau of Environmental Services. They serve the public 24/7, 365 days a year, and I'm proud to lead them. And finally, my two staff liaisons, Jim Blackwood and Liam Frost. Now, I'd like to invite Mike Stewart and his Director of Finance, Cecilia Hune, to kick things off with the Water Bureau presentation. Mike, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Mike Stewart. I'm the Director of the Water Bureau, and on my right is Cecilia Hune. She'll do the heavy lifting today. Many bureaus, after they submit their budget and there's a vote, are done, but we have the privilege of having another hearing or two with a goal of producing this little yellow book called Water Rates and Sewer Rates. It's very important to us, and this book, do we know what color it's going to be next year?
Red.
It's going to be red next year. This book governs our lives and the lives of our ratepayers, our customers, and developers, and so on, with all the rates and charges that we use throughout the year, and that's our goal here today. So Cecilia?
Thanks, Mike. Cecilia Hune, the Finance Director for the Portland Water Bureau. I'm going to start on Slide 2 here. The Water Bureau's total resources for next year, fiscal year 1617, will be about $238 million. 2/3 of that will be from water sales revenue. That's the monthly charges, and about $10 million of capital revenues. These revenues are generated from rates, fees, and charges that are in the ordinance that is before you today. These revenues will fund the capital program, and that includes starting work on the Washington Park project, and the operating budget includes the $2 million ad packages that is in the approved budget. Next slide. Summary of our rates. Water retail rates will increase 7%. Our forecast a year ago was 9.4%. The 7% rate increase will result in about a $2.22 a month increase to a typical residential customer. System development charges, that's calculated on a reimbursement basis with the updated system asset values, those will go up 2.7%. Fixed fees and charges, those are charges for mains and services installations, hydrant use, development fees, permits. Those fees and charges were updated to the cost to provide those services. Next slide, please. Water rates components and the five-year forecast. You can see, a large part of the rate increases in the forecast is to fund the capital program, and that's the salmon color on the screen, and maybe orange on your handout. And that orange portion of the graph includes Washington Park Reservoir and the Willamette River Crossing projects. We continue to use the rate stabilization account to smooth and stabilize our rate increases. You can see that for fiscal year 1617, that 7% rate increase without our rate stabilization account, we would need 11.5% rate increase to fund the capital program and to operate and maintain the water system as we have included in the budget request.
Cecilia, let me just comment, this is our five-year forecast, and we tend to be pretty conservative in our assumptions, so this has, in the last three or four years, been the starting point, even with the rate stabilization contribution, the starting point, and we take advantage of historically low interest rates, whatever the other shared costs are, and we scrub that number, and we get it typically below what the forecast is, but this is, this is a snapshot of what our five-year forecast might, may look like.
Yes, and that was the last point I was going to make about the slide related to the forecasted rates, is that we- rates, is that we do include very conservative economic assumptions that are in here. That gets updated on an annual basis.
So pink in that slide, it's a little hard to read here. Oh, actually, I just need to adjust my color. She's got a brilliant orange on yours. Okay. Pink on that slide, the larger bar is capital.
Yes.
All right, now I can read it.
And why don't we use the rate stabilization so that the rate is always the same over the five-year forecast? Why is there a jump in 2020?
That particular jump in 2020, you see the yellow portion right in the middle there. That's the Portland building, and we did not spread that rate impact. We don't know how we're going to be funding it. We just sort of put that into that one year, because that was the year that we're expected to start paying for it. That is certainly something that we'll be working with OMF facilities and debt to, you know, refine some of the assumptions that we have in our forecast. Again, that's something that we'll be working to update as we get more information about the Portland Building project.
Thank you. That's very helpful, because otherwise, they are all around the eight-point-something range, right? And the reason that you are required to contribute to the Portland Building is because you own property within it, right? So you're--
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And whether we own or, I mean, we're a tenant. We will be in the Portland Building. And so that cost will, I mean, we will be sharing in on that cost.
And staff has to be somewhere, and that's why rates are appropriate to use for that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Next slide. As Commissioner Fish mentioned, we provide nearly two gallons of water for a penny. Slide 6, how does the rate changes affect our customers' bill? All of our retail customers will see a seven percent increase to their water portion of their bill. The qualifying low-income customers will continue to receive a 50% discount to their bills. And you see the amounts on the table, so I'm not going to get into the dollar amounts. Next slide, a comparison of the water bills to other basic utilities that most household customers uses. We make up about 6% of total household utility services, and you can see that we're among the lowest-cost utilities. The next slide is a comparison of our monthly typical residential customer bill with the rate increase at 3383, and how we compare to those other regional water providers. And the last slide I have is also a comparison of our system development charges to some of those same water providers, as well as others, and we are among the water providers with the lowest system development charges.
So can we talk about that for a minute as it happens? Somewhere between when we were talking about the comprehensive plan and when we got to this item on our council calendar, the Census Bureau released the information that, to no one's surprise in this room, Portland grew by 12,000 people in the last 12 months, so we're now a city of 632,000 people. So capital investment is going to be pretty important for every bureau, and recovering costs from new development is going to be pretty important. So I know there's state law that dictates and doesn't dictate, but certainly heavily influences what our STCs are. Where do you feel like we are, given that rate of growth, given the huge demands for capital investment, and given where we are? You know, we're kind of in the middle, upper-middle part of the pack on rates and in the lower part of the pack on STCs. Thoughts about that?
Well, and, you know, this is the only, as I was telling Mike the other day, this is the only benefit of being or having a system that's very old.
Right.
You know, our system, again, is based on a reimbursement basis, and so there's been a lot of people, you know, the amount of people that have already paid into the system. So our cost, as far as system development charges, is low for that very reason. To the extent that we're reinvesting in our system, that's what's, you know, will drive the rates up. I don't, we're not expanding our system, so to the extent that we shouldn't be moving too far to the right on this graph.
Okay, that's a helpful reminder. We're not building a $55 million conduit across the Willamette River because more people are moving here. We're building it because the old ones are old, and they won't survive an earthquake, so.
Right. We're doing replacements of our system for the most part.
Other questions, colleagues? Mayor, the way we've structured this is, we'll go right--
I did have a question, Dave. Because you mentioned the low-income discount process, and we had had a discussion in previous years about whether that could be modified, and I know you've been working on that. What's the update on that?
The Portland Utility Board has been reviewing a report that we gave them. We are going to come back to that question, and we'll be coming to council probably sometime this calendar year with some recommendations. We're looking at everything from the possibility of changing the building code to require individual meters of multifamily units, to different ways that we could provide a benefit to our eligible customers, to what we're doing currently, which is trying to strengthen the relationship we have with the county that does the outreach to eligible customers, so that we try to capture more of the people that are currently eligible that may not know about the program. And we're targeting older adults in the hopes of keeping their homes, and partnerships with groups like Home Forward, who can work with us to, we have some structural, as you know very well, there's some structural problems with the program that requires a meter. Home Forward, through their Section 8 program, has a lot of potentially eligible customers. We're working with them to get to more of them. But the bigger fixes, in terms of how we might make a substantial jump in folks who take advantage of it, we're still considering alternatives, and we'll be coming back to council.
That's exciting. Thank you. And then what's the update on the billing and returning to automatic transfers?
Well, we've heard from, you know, we have over 30,000 people that depended or relied on the convenience of automatic payments, and obviously, we deeply regretted inconveniencing them as part of PCI compliance. Mike tells me that perhaps as early as July, we'll be coming back to council with a suite of enhancements, which we'll be offering our customers. And I'm really excited about, and so is Kathy, our customer service. More importantly, Kathy's really excited, because--
I think it's very much more important that Kathy's excited about it.
She's been, she bore the brunt of PCI compliance and with having to disappoint a lot of customers by suspending auto pay. We'll be coming forward, Commissioner Fritz, with some really substantial improvements and enhancements in customer service, including options which people can take advantage of, and we're very excited. I don't want to overpromise on this, but we hope to have it teed up to come back in July.
I want to note for the record that it wasn't the Water Bureau or Environmental Services that required a change from that process, that it was to do with overall compliance with credit card payments in the city. So I commend the fact that you've probably had to take the, specifically Kathy and her team have had to take the brunt of complaints, and I appreciate their reminders and the things that you've done to remind me and others. And then, do you want to also plug the monthly billing, the monthly averaging option?
Thank you very much. You and I should take this on the road, by the way.
I'm wondering if you two rehearsed this.
We do offer a monthly billing option. I take advantage of it. I get an email, I get an e-bill that directs me to pay it online, and it's so easy that even I can figure it out. And we are trying to migrate more people to monthly billing. I think we're close to 20,000 now.
Something like that.
Something like that. The mayor has challenged us to move that as fast as possible. And of course, what we find is that our customers like it for a lot of reasons. One is that it gives you more flexibility in doing budgeting. Two is the typical customer doesn't have the same sticker shock when they get a monthly bill. I mean, if I got a monthly, if I got a quarterly bill from my cable company, I'd have a heart attack. So it allows you to compare apples to apples. And we will also be proposing some refinements in the monthly billing process that'll make it even easier. And the new system will allow us to send more customized messages to people through the e-bills.
That's actually new to me, that you would like people to sign up for the monthly billing. It would be better for the system if we all went to monthly?
Well, we think there's a lot of benefits. A lot of people still request a paper bill to follow, so it doesn't have as much benefit in terms of paper as we'd like at this point. But yes, we would like as many people to move to e-bills as possible. We're constantly pumping up e-bills through our communications with our customers.
Right. But for those of us who, I actually like not paying for a couple of months and then paying once every quarter--
No change.
Would you prefer that, as long as we're doing it online, does it matter to the efficiency of the system, whether we do it on a monthly basis or a quarterly basis?
Not the way that it is right now. It's more of a psychology thing, that in, when people talk about the bills and so on, if you only hit with this quarterly bill, it seems awfully big. So if you were a private business, this would be, it would be much better to have the monthly bill, because you're not talking about such a large number. So the psychology of it's important. You do it by choice, so that's okay, but many people would rather have a smaller bill.
There's no inherent efficiency in the system?
Not the way our system is put together right now.
Nor is there a cash flow issue, but again, we'd like as many people on e-bill as possible. It gives us more options for communicating with them. The customer service enhancements we're going to be rolling out include, for example, an opportunity to send reminders to a third party. We're very excited about. So an older adult that maybe is struggling with managing their bills can sign up to have a trusted custodian or child or caretaker also get a reminder and those kinds of things. So we have more flexibility with e-bills. But you are free to continue to get a quarterly bill, and we'll offer people choice. That's the key.
Yeah, I know a lot of Portlanders, we want to do the right thing, and so that was, I'm glad for that clarification, that as long as it's e-billing, it doesn't matter much to you whether it's monthly or quarterly.
Correct.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So thank you, team. Mayor, we're going to move right to BES. Jonas Berry is here, BES Business Services Manager. Mike Jordan is traveling, so Jonas is going to present for the team. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, Council. Jonas Berry, Business Services Manager for the Bureau of Environmental Services. And Commissioner, before I begin, I believe we have an amendment to correct a scrivener's error in the exhibit.
Yes, I think my colleagues have that amendment. Why don't you describe it?
Sure. So this simply corrects a date error in Section E5 of Exhibit A related to the recent extension of exemption of STCs for accessory dwelling units. That was extended two years to 2018. We failed to update that in the exhibit, so this simply corrects that from 2016 to 2017.
Is there a motion to accept the amendment?
Certainly.
Second. All in favor? Let's take a roll call, please.
Aye.
No big.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And before I begin, if I may, I'd like to take just a moment to recognize an employee who's retiring from the Bureau. As Senior Economist for Bureau of Environmental Services, for over the past, approximately the past decade, Sam Murray has been the person primarily responsible for creating and managing and monitoring the rates and the methodologies that lead to the ordinance that's before you today. Sam has been an employee of the city for 17 years. His experience has been valued and valuable, and we will certainly miss him at the Bureau. So just wanted to take a moment here today to say thank you to Sam for his service to the city and to Portland ratepayers. Thank you.
Sure. Congratulations.
So very quickly, what do we do at BES? We provide, we manage over $13.5 billion in assets that provide reliable sewage collection and treatment, and manage the city's stormwater system and protect watershed health. We're the lead agency for compliance with a number of environmental regulatory requirements and for the city's Portland Harbor Superfund coordination efforts. As you know, this is a fairly stable budget that's been proposed. No major changes from prior expectations. The $2.2 million increase to the operating budget is a 1.4% increase over the prior years of 1516's revised operating budget. We're coming out of a cycle of facility planning at the two treatment plants and transitioning to condition assessment relating to pump stations and to the stormwater system. We're planning for the future to ensure we continue to effectively manage the system to meet ratepayer expectations and avoid any losses of service reliability. On the capital improvement side, as we're coming out of completion of the CSO project, we're moving to a mode of system maintenance, addressing maintenance backlogs and using asset management principles to identify the smartest and most critical system replacement and investments. And you can see that in the CIP for fiscal 1617, approximately two-thirds of which is for maintenance and reliability projects. You've seen this slide before, I won't go into any detail, but a reminder, as the Commissioner noted, that about two-thirds of our budget goes towards investment in assets, either the blue pie, investment expected in capital improvements in 1617, or the green slice of the pie, the 180 million that goes towards payment of debt service related to prior capital investment. So rates for 1617 will increase the average monthly single-family residential bill by $2.20, which is an effective increase of 3.25%. The primary components of the utility rates are sanitary sewer costs at about 60% of that amount, stormwater at around 40% of that amount, and then a fraction going towards the Superfund Portland Harbor efforts. And as you can see in Exhibit A to the ordinance, all of the various individual rates and fees, including those impacting non-residential customers, those impacting developers, et cetera, those are experiencing comparable modest increases this year with a couple of exceptions that I'd like to note. The first is STCs. As was mentioned earlier, STCs reimburse the Bureau for investments we've made in increasing system capacity to accommodate new development and growth. Fees for 1617, on average, for the Bureau of Environmental Services are actually decreasing by 1.8% this year. We also currently collect around $1.4 million annually from building permit review and land use review fees. And at the suggestion of the Citizens Utility Board, and after discussion previously with this body, we're increasing that cost recovery target to 75%. That leads to an increase in revenues for the Bureau of $1.4 million ongoing. I want to quickly mention a couple of assistance programs. Obviously, we have a low-income discount program. It's offered for families at 60% of median state income or below. We have over 7,000 participants currently on that program. As noted in the exhibit, the average discount for, on an average monthly bill for 1617 would be just around $31 a month. We also have the Clean River Rewards Stormwater Discount Program. Over 33,000 accounts on that program for properties that manage their onsite stormwater in a way that we don't bear a cost as the system, so they get an eligible discount for that, around $8.50 on an average single-family monthly residential bill. And I will flag that that program is set to expire in June 2017, so we expect to be coming back over the next 12 months with a discussion about what we do with that program going forward. We do monitor and revise our rate forecast at various points throughout the year. I'm happy to share that our rate projection has decreased considerably from the expectation this, last year at this time. We began last year 1516's requested budget with an expectation of a 1617 increase of 3.85%. We revised that downward to 3.45 as we started this budget process, and we've been able to further reduce that today to a 3.25% impact. Three major things that led to that change or that have changed since we talked to you in February. The first is the increase in revenues due to the cost recovery on the land use and building permit fees, the $1.4 million that came from that. We're using some additional rate stabilization dollars, about $1.1 million being contributed this year. Those costs help offset the additional costs for the data center relocation project. Those costs coming into our budget this year, and the net effect is reducing that rate to 3.25. What does that mean to ratepayers? What that means is the reduction from 3.85 to 3.25 over the past year's cycle means that approximately $800,000 a year this year and ongoing is staying in the pockets of residential ratepayers within the city of Portland. And I want to point out that these improvements impact not just fiscal 1617, but increase the forecast in future years as well. You can see here the favorable downward trending in our rate increases over the past five years, and you can see that as we take a long-term view in our rate forecast, we're really targeting a strategy towards stable and predictable rate increases with the hope that we can continue lowering that bar. You can see a five-year projection here. Our projection actually goes out further than that, using the rate stabilization fund balance to stabilize those rates at a consistent level. Our current strategy aims towards a long-term path where rates do not outpace general economic and income growth. We look forward to continuing to work with Portland Utility Board, Citizens Utility Board, City Budget Office, City Council, and other public stakeholders to strike the right balance between reliable service, smart investment in system infrastructure, and rate affordability. And as I wrap up, I'd like to share how we compare to peers. After implementation of these rates on July 1, we'll be kind of in the middle category among a dozen or so peer cities. If we extended this list, we'd still fit around the middle, middle to bottom. This year, we're actually being passed by three entities on this list, Olympia, Sacramento, and Cleveland, and we expect to continue moving down the list as we stabilize our rate increases over the future. You can see here that our 3.25% increase is lower than nearly all of our peers, and we expect that will continue to be the case in the coming years.
Colleagues, this is-- Colleagues, this is a great slide that also illustrates the benefit of being an early city to adopt a combined sewer overflow system. So, we got it out of the way relatively early, and we did it during a time when we could borrow at very favorable rates. And for cities like Atlanta, Georgia, and others that are just coming into their CSO compliance time, they're going to have substantially higher costs and likely to have higher borrowing costs. So, that is a virtue of us having completed that work ahead of some of our peer cities.
And lastly, to tie back to the Water Bureau's presentation and the Commissioner's introductory statements, I want to show you the combined increase between the two utilities. Impact is an increase of 4.45%, which is a combined monthly dollar impact on the average single-family residential bill of a little over $4 per month. And with that, Commissioner, I'll hand back to you.
Thank you very much. We had some invited testimony. First questions from my colleagues. Thank you, Jonas. Well done. Mayor, we have two panels of invited testimony. First, I'd like to invite up the co-chairs of the Portland Utility Board, Kendra Smith and Alan Warman. Thank them for hanging out a little longer than they might have expected. They're going to provide some testimony, and then we're going to invite Janice Thompson from the Citizens Utility Board to come up, offer her comments, and then we'll take public testimony.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Kendra Smith, and I'm with the Pub co-chair. I'd like to thank you once again for the opportunity to share the Pub's perspective regarding rates. Given the complexities that the utilities have and the continuous demands on each Bureau, the Pub has spent the, since September, looking at current practices, but really with an eye towards the future, and as they've taught us, continuing to balance the issues of affordability, levels of service, and risk tolerance. For both bureaus, the operating budgets for fiscal year 1617 as well as the five-year CIP are products of previously developed programs, plans, and studies that have guided their decision-making around the infrastructure. So, for the Pub, we didn't expect to significantly influence this year's budget process, given the timing of things. Though, we do look to advise the bureaus and City Council in the future by looking upstream of this year's budget process. We're looking forward to continued briefings from the bureaus and their upcoming strategic planning to identify where the Pub can most influence the process and carry out the charge to advise you. We do have a few elements that we'd like to share with you, and I'm going to have Alan go ahead and share some of those themes of what we're going to focus on for the upcoming year.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner. I think the first area that we focused, in addition to the letter that we sent to you on January 29, is affordability. This is the affordability by our customers and our ratepayers, and it's affected by these proposed rate increases. These increases are above both inflation and median income. I think the affordability that's impacted by these combined Bureau budgets, that if you combine them are essentially about 5.2%, and if you compound it and forecast it, as the bureaus have done, over the next five years, you're looking at a little over 28.6%. I think that needs to be reviewed as we go forward, and I would like to say also, the Pub, because of the short term that we've engaged, we plan to work with the bureaus about the long-term trajectory of these rates, including specific projects, staffing levels, capital directions, our aging infrastructure, and communication so we can get this out to our customers, understanding the value that these bureaus bring to us.
We might also want to add that we did look at the biogas project in the organic waste receiving facility, and give kudos to Janice for digging deep into that, and we concur with her analysis and the areas of concern that were identified in that. And the only other thing I would mention is that we have had a subcommittee meeting, I think they've met eight times, eight or 10 times, looking at this wicked problem of the low-income discount program and the complexities of the existing infrastructure and meters and trying to be equitable and making that program available to all the folks that potentially need it. It is really challenging. I was just in a subcommittee meeting today. They're trying to work through it, but there are good reasons as to why we haven't come up with a solution to that yet. So, there's a strong group of folks working on that, and hopefully we'll be able to bring something forward in the fall, as the Commissioner suggested.
I really appreciate your work on that with the expertise that's on your group, because I do think it's potentially a model for other fees and services that we provide. So, thank you for doing that hard work.
I guess the only question I'll just ask you before I thank you again for your service is, when we set up the Portland Utility Board, we built into the system that you would have dedicated staff. So, you would have independent dedicated staff at your service to help you do the work. Now that you're kind of getting into this new assignment and a forecast that next year you're likely to go even deeper into the budget, and as you've indicated, do you feel like you're getting, do you have the resources and the staff support you need to be effective?
Absolutely. Very much so.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's a great group, all across the board, not only with Melissa, but the staff in both bureaus have been very responsive to all of our various questions, and we really appreciate their tolerance and flexibility in bringing materials to us.
I'm proud of this council for correcting a flaw that I think existed structurally in the predecessor oversight body, because we used to have these annual reports, and the concern was that they couldn't get a quorum, they didn't have enough people assigned to the body, and they didn't feel like they had the staff support. And we specifically built in that you would have dedicated staff support, and you are truly independent. So, thank you both for your service.
Thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you both. Thanks. Okay, now, you say one more invited testimony?
Of course. And Janice Thompson from the Citizens Utility Board is here to share her thoughts, and then we'll take it to the Pub.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Janice Thompson, Citizens Utility Board of Oregon. So, I've got some testimony that's coming your way. I'm not going to go through every little bit of it, but I want to just zip through it, highlight those parts that are just kind of up to you to read, and then spend a little more time with some of the information at the end. So, the first three pages kind of focus on the proposed budgets or the, yeah, the budget that's been adopted or will be adopted, and therefore informs the rates. So, in terms of BES, I want to thank all of you, but especially the Mayor and Commissioner Fish for two adjustments that are noted on Page 1 and the top of Page 2 that were made in the Mayor's budget. They've already been alluded to, in terms of the biogas project and also the cost recovery issue. In terms of the Water Bureau, it was really great that Commissioner Fish and the bureaus kind of included some key recommendations from Cub in their requested budget. And so, thanks to the Mayor for retaining those provisions. One relates to general funds, dollars related to the Mount Tabor historic preservation work, and the outreach related to the monthly, availability of monthly billing. So, on Page 2 there, it kind of highlights Cub's three reasons to support this. The one, and the two of them already came up in previous discussion. I just wanted to mention the third one, which is, you know, for those people, and Commissioner Fritz, your kind of focus, I mean, for those people who, like me, are actually kind of old-fashioned and still get to pay your bills, you know, a quarterly bill is more cost-effective for the bureaus. So, obviously, I think that's going to, that difference is going to just kind of start to fade away as there's more and more e-billing. Nevertheless, I think one of the reasons there's a need for a really vigorous outreach effort on the availability of the monthly billing option is that future discussions about possibly moving to quarterly meter reading can be informed by that information. Like, you know, if you really do your job and get the word out, and there's still, you know, a surprising large people who say, you know what, a quarterly bill is okay, well then, when there are discussions, as there have been in the past, about the very expensive step of moving to meter, monthly meter reading, you have that information. But what I don't want to have happen is to potentially have that question come up and the answer to be, well, we really didn't do a whole lot of outreach, so we don't really know what, you know, the use of the monthly billing option tells us in terms of that. So, just a little more than I had attended there, but since it came up earlier, I thought I would highlight that.
Well, it might be interesting to look at some other big-ticket items that come along. For instance, auto insurance or homeowner's insurance premiums, that I certainly have the option of paying them on an annual basis or a monthly basis, and, you know, obviously, it depends on whether you're actually writing the check. And it's one of the reasons that I prefer currently the quarterly billing, is because I just have to figure out, I have to remember to do that once a quarter rather than once a month. So, that might be a guide to find out from the insurance building how, if, who opts for which course of action.
You know, that's a really good point, because that is a mechanism that gives people the option.
And one that's been in existence for a long time.
Right. The catch is, is that when you opt into, you know, paying an annual car insurance fee on a quarterly basis, you're also assessed a fee. So, you know, anyway.
It's interesting to me, sometimes, with some of my bills, actually, it's cheaper to pay it monthly, and I don't know what's in it for the...
I need to, so it's your car insurance. Bottom of Page 2, top of Page 3, I just want to highlight and thank Commissioner Fish and CBO for some process improvements that I think really made real some of the suggestions from the Blue Ribbon Commission in terms of active engagement of the City Council with the outreach players. I did want to put the combined rate increase in context, I mean, the key point there is the, you know, overall trend of utility rates. Cub, you know, has a long history of taking a look at energy rates and cable and other rates, is upward. The Portland rate of increase is higher than some and lower than others, but leveling off or dropping is very much the exception, not the rule. One exception that I noted is natural gas prices, which is related to fracking, which of course, the catch there is a lot of environmental costs are not being factored in. But I should have added, from the earlier conversation about the solid waste, so that's really great, too. So, the rest of Page 3 just focuses on some updates. You know, last year, I identified a few things, and so, these highlight some, you know, something from both the Water Bureau and BES in terms of retail, estimating retail water use and the stormwater system plan, some real advances. I kind of highlighted some concerns a year ago, and I'm seeing, you know, really positive movement. On that last item on Page 3, related to the CBO review of the BES and PBO maintenance operations interagency agreement, this came up last year, and CBO took on the work of angels in terms of taking a look at this topic. They've made some progress. It would be really great if they could, you know, make that a higher priority and so that their findings could be incorporated into the next budget development process. So, then, on the following page, kind of next steps, I mean, or key next steps, the top two items related to the Water Bureau and possible new approach regarding the bull run hydro power, I'll let you read, as well as continued identification on the BES side of needing to update some fairly old cost allocation studies. Something I mentioned a year ago and came up recently with the Pub is, you know, getting ahead of the curve on the June 30, 2017, some sunset of the Clean River Rewards program. But I just wanted to mention that I am now thinking in terms of, like, that actually would benefit by being a discussion within the broader context of financial incentives. And there's some discussion of that on the bottom of Page 4 and Page 5. One quick thing about the Clean River Rewards assessment is, I think there needs, particularly needs to be kind of an equity lens in that review. I mean, it's a significant benefit, but relatively small percentages of single-family households take it, which just means who's not, and what are the fairness concerns? So, the last several pages kind of outline what I see as kind of two approaches to trying to lower the slope of rate increases. I mean, I think the, like I mentioned, the overall trend is upward. I think the question is, is that, you know, how steep that upward trend is. One approach, which Cub has been doing all along, is diligent review of CIP planning and the first-year entries. And so, that helped kind of identify the biogas and the organic waste on other topics. It also comes into play. And this is particularly important, given that so much of the rates for the next several years are really, there's not a lot of wiggle room, because they're a reflection of decisions made longer ago, as been noted by other speakers. But I also wanted to just highlight, you know, another approach, which I think has some pros and cons. And so, partly, I wanted to talk about this to get your input on, you know, the pros and cons. But it's what I call the working backwards. And so, the idea is to pick some future year, like 10 years out, like, you know, fiscal year '25, '26, and work backwards to see how planning, CIP planning, as well as plans for O&amp;M spending in both bureaus would need to change. If there was a request now to, like, take a look at some, that project, future combined rate, and just say, well, what would happen if you nudged it down? And I'm not talking about nudging it down dramatically, because there's some reality here, but even, you know, nudging it down, you know, I could say a half percent, just theoretically. So, obviously, that process requires a really thorough understanding of the rate-making process, just the current forecast, the whole forecasting, as well as a recognition that this would be a lot of work for the bureaus. And it also, but as part of evaluating the merit of doing this, I kind of put together this chart based on information from CBO on the, kind of, the Page 6, on like, well, it's now the actual rate increase percentages for the next fiscal year, and then kind of what's expected, with the combined bill figure as well. So, that illustrates that for the next five years, you know, the current guidance of keep under 5% looks doable. More challenging in that fiscal year 2019, 20, 1920, but probably still definitely in the ballpark. I mean, I put asterisks there in the context of the, on the chart, about the higher Water Bureau. Bureau increases, because, you know, BES is kind of more in this steady, stabilized. And so, the asterisk just kind of highlight, like, what we're getting, which is the Willamette River Crossing, Washington Park, and then, like, was mentioned earlier, the beginning of the whole Portland building. So, that table and the information above then, I think, indicates that the, you know, a more significant question is what the bureaus could tell us about their financial projections for the next five years. And so, Cecilia and Jonas were kind enough to, you know, give me some information on that score. It's, I want to highlight that forecasting is really challenging, especially for the Water Bureau. But the, it looks like the, on the BES side, and they're going to continue with that 3.25%. On the water side, you start to see, over the next five years, that peak of, in 1920, kind of started to taper down, and it seems like that is going to continue downward and then level off in the ballpark of their increase for the upcoming fiscal year, which would mean a combined bill continuing in this, you know, 5%, a little under 5% kind of that we're seeing now. So, I want to really stress that, you know, these are very initial, long-term projections, and so, they're preliminary. And as well as any of these projections could change significantly, especially the farther out you go, if some major shift in policy. And like, the one I want to highlight, because I think it really helps bring it home, is, you know, if the city of Portland lost its cryptosporidium exemption, you'd be talking about having to build, be, well, regulators telling the city to build a new water treatment plant, and then, you need, you know, all the other projections. So, but it's still, you know, if these, if after getting more refined long-term cost projections from BES are still close to these initial estimates, and both sets of rates then begin to stabilize in this fiscal year '21, '22, I think this working backwards approach could still be useful, but I think it also helps to put into perspective just how big a problem there is. I think, you know, people start to see that 10, you know, those, those water percentage increases, it's like, oh, that's going to continue on and on, and it doesn't look like it's going to happen. So, I think it's still a valuable exercise, because I think, you know, anything we can do to nudge down that rate of increase. But I wanted to map this out, to get some, just to lay it out there and get some feedback in terms of how valuable this exercise might be, especially because, as I already have indicated, it would be a big project for the both bureaus in terms of staff time, and then obviously, it's, you know, going to, you know, it's best probably done, so, well, two things. It needs to be viewed as a long-term project. It's not something that, you know, the bureaus could, like, do on a dime. And it probably, you know, they both have, in different timelines, kind of strategic plan updates kind of underway, and so, it could be tied together with that. But, I mean, I was kind of heartened to see that, yes, there's issues, but this analysis was kind of like, you know, some of the past really dramatic increases may well be starting to be behind us. So, I was just kind of curious what your thoughts were as much as anything else.
So, just, just on that point, Janice, that, I think that the, the challenge we face is all the unknowns. So, we don't know what's going to happen when the Fed starts tightening rates, but if interest rates go up, that has a big impact on both bureaus, because they borrow a lot of money. We are continuing to invest heavily in replacing old pipes. Public expects us to do that, because they don't like them when they break, and they don't like sewage backups in their, in their basements, they don't like, businesses don't like disruptions. That's, that's a long-term challenge. We, as a city, are making a much more significant commitment to making our, all of our infrastructure resilient and to make sure that it survives a major seismic event. That's always a challenge to talk to the public about, because there are some who say we should just roll the dice and, and hope for the best. But particularly with the investment you've cited with the Willamette River Crossing, if we don't make that crossing stronger, and we don't fortify that pipe, then in the event of a seismic event, you know, our West Side customers are at risk, and that's unacceptable. And then, of course, it's the regulatory environment. You mentioned cryptosporidium and maintaining our variance, but, you know, every year, we read of a different set of issues that the federal government's tackling. This year, it's water quality. And mercifully, we don't have a lead problem in our source water or our pipes, but there are homes, because of the age of their plumbing, that have issues. And the federal government is grappling with what, what's the appropriate level of regulation and who should pay for what. So, those are all variables. One thing that I'm pleased with in your analysis and the feedback we've gotten from the public is, I think we're hitting just about the right balance now of, 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 of new investments. People expect this system, the aging infrastructure, to be updated and maintained, and they expect us to prepare for the big one, and we, we can't do that at just investing at the rate of inflation. But I like your idea of going to the out years and, and coming back. And, and I also continue to think we should, we should take a look at why, in water, our forecast, the, the actual is significantly below the forecast on a regular basis, whereas at BES, they tend to be very close. I, I think we are making different assumptions in both bureaus, and I think that's also part of a communications challenge. We have to make sure the public understands the differences. But we appreciate all your thoughtful recommendations, and this is the second year in a row where your recommendations to the mayor and to the commissioner in charge have resulted in a lowering of rates. So, thank you very much.
And the other wild card, and I think you mentioned this, but just to emphasize it, you know, I talked earlier about the growth of the city. It's not just in the city. Hillsborough just passed 100,000 people in the same census. And some of our regional partners are doing crazy things like drinking the Willamette. But we may have more wholesale customers that are thirstier, and that, that spreads our cus, our, our costs over a larger basis if they, you know, if they choose to drink Bull Run water.
Well, especially if some of those other adjoining water systems, because of their actions, are starting to see, Portland water could look cheaper and cheaper as time goes on compared to the, you know, because if you're building a pipe across Washington County and down to Wilsonville, you're also spending a lot of money.
We have, we keep hearing about all these climate refugees coming here. We have the two largest water supplies in the state, the well water and the Bull Run. We have an abundance of water, and frankly, Mayor, I think it's going to be part of our competitive advantage as a region going forward. And if we can convince our existing wholesale customers to stay connected to the system and then grow our business, as you suggest with the population growth in the region, that's great news for Portland ratepayers, because we're a fixed cost system, and we'll be able to, we'll be able to pass those savings on to our ratepayers.
And in that regard, something I was monitoring from the Water Bureau's perspective was, you know, they go through, you know, there, as part of the contract with the wholesale customers, there is a whole cost allocation audit process that was completed this last year, and I was, you know, kind of monitoring that. And I think it, it resolved various issues satisfactorily. I think it really illustrates, you know, good working relationships with the adjoining wholesale customers, and, you know, I think hopefully will be part and parcel of maintaining those kinds of connections. So, just another good thing that the Water Bureau was doing.
Other questions for Janice? We really appreciate your role in the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mayor, that completes the formal presentation.
Okay, let's see, we have signed up for testimony?
So, two people signed up. Please come on up are Dee White and Ron Langford.
Come on up, please.
Welcome, Dee.
Good afternoon.
Thanks for hanging out with us.
Patience. Come on up, come up. Okay, we're just on water rates, right, water and sewer rates right now. Okay, all right, well, you're free to make one. Go ahead, please, Dee. Well, you, you come on, come on up, sir. You get a chance to speak, that's all right.
Sir. I've been a Portlander for 64 years, and my generation's been here since it was founded. I don't like any other water than Bull Run water, and I drank it all over the world. So, I would say, recommend that you advertise or emphasize the fact that it's good clean water and doesn't give you worms, because I haven't been sick from it, not once. And I've got seven children, 28 grandchildren, and they're all healthy because of Bull Run water. So, I would lean towards the human side of what water really is to us than what the commercial or the academic or the financial side is. We're going to pay for it anyways. I lived in St. John's. We paid 80% of municipal taxes out there since I was a kid, and we're still doing it, because we're blue collar people, we work hard, and we do the right thing, and we're honest. And that's all I got to say. I wasn't going to say that, because I got something...
No, we appreciate you saying it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for saying it. And by the way, you know who said that recently, who was here? It was the Whitmer Brothers.
Oh, yeah, that's right. They make good beer out of that water.
They, they have expanded their facility here, and they have cited the Bull Run water as the secret of their success. So, thank you for highlighting that.
Might as well be useful. I have some personal nature if I could get five minutes of time, sir. All right, thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
I'm Dee White. I live on, off of Foster Road, and I've turned, I'm, I'm, it's going to, what I have to say will take more than three minutes, but I'm just going to hit the high points y'all have. I sent in my comments earlier. Five points I wanted to talk about. The first and most important being the request for another $65 million in capital, capital improvement projects because of the increased cost of Washington Park reservoirs. On page 14 of the document, I, it stated, "The biggest change in the fiscal year, five year request is related to the need to mitigate geotechnical issues and provide adequate seismic resilience." Translated, this means dismantling and excavating the steep ravine that surrounds the open reservoirs, combined with blowing up the intact, secured reservoir basins, could potentially trigger the ancient, currently stable landslide, which will put the people of Portland at great risk. Therefore, we need another $65 million to mitigate this potential catastrophe. At this point, we're looking at yet another boondoggle, much like Paul Butte, but in the middle of the city's crown jewel park. It's sheer lunacy. The Water Bureau knew it was going to cost way more than the original $62 million, and they're not fail, the reservoirs are not failing, they're not in danger, and they could make beautiful and accessible again for a fraction of the cost, which has now been revised to $170 million, $170 million. Three months after the much contested decision was made by council, the Cornforth Geotechnical Report came out, which added the $100 million and two years to the four-year construction This stupid dishonest decision to demolish is being challenged in courts by the citizens. I've attached, in my testimony, the Court of Appeals, the opening argument to the Court of Appeals, which was argued two days ago. There's no evidence that the current reservoirs are either in danger or are a danger to the public. The demolition itself will put the public at risk, and the end result of a closed system will seriously threaten the public health of ratepayers and their families. Even the skeptical pub stated on page five, "While the Bureau has engaged in significant research and planning to mitigate potential risk, those activities, as well as the evaluation of alternatives, cost increases to date, and ongoing project monitoring need to be, oh, God, restored and refilled." The second thing is this lab y'all want to build. You want to bring in the cryptosporidium testing in-house for $130,000 and hire two people for the whopping combined salaries of $231,000. The reason y'all gave is because there's a reduction in labs across the country. Right now, y'all are shipping 10 liters a week across the country, and obviously, since the labs are declining, crypto testing isn't that big of a deal. I guess I'll just have to stop.
All right, well, thank you so much. Appreciate it. I know we've got your letter, so thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak today on this? All right.
Mayor, that, that concludes our presentation, and this is non-emergency.
Right, so these, these both pass, pass to second reading at the same time as the rest of...
In two weeks, Carl.
Yeah, two weeks?
Correct, two weeks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Again, I just want to thank our, our teams for their outstanding work, and it looks like we have a 15-minute break.
I think we do, and we'll come back at 4 o'clock to talk about transportation. So, a recess till then.[1505.91] So a recess till then.[478.65]